Let's call the session or call to order the work session for Thursday, March 20th, for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. We're in the supervisors' hearing room on Melody Lane, person ARS 38431.02H. The public will have visible access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to start. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may be either in person or by phone or Teams. Public can also attend in the same manner. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Please, we'll start with the roll call. District one, Crosby, here. District two.
Gomez is here.
And District three, Antonori is here. Supervisor present and in person. Let's start with introductions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
You are?
I am. I am Anita Baca, I'm the Housing Director.
Okay, great. So Anita is here today to talk to us about Agenda Item number one, which is a five-year plan for the Housing Authority of Cochise County. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So every five years, we're required to submit our five-year plan to HUD. Every other year, we just go over our annual plan and any changes made in the administrative plan. So this is your lucky day. You get to work on our five-year plan for the first time for all of you. So with that being said, I will go over the different parts of the plan. Yeah, okay. Right there? No?
Is it on the table?
Yeah.
Now it's not working.
Okay. Thank you. So our mission is to provide safe, decent sanitary housing conditions for low-income families and to manage resources efficiently. We're to promote personal, economic, and social upward mobility to provide families the opportunity to transition from subsidized to non-subsidized housing. And I apologize, I didn't mention the section of the five-year plan that we'll be touching on. So the five-year plan is actually HUD 50075, and it looks like this in your attachments. And the mission was Section B1 of the five-year plan. So I usually skip for the purpose of the PowerPoint, I usually skip Section A because it just goes over the Housing Authority, what the plan is, and how many units we have. And so I just typically jump into Section B. Would you prefer for me to continue to do that? Okay, then we'll continue with Section B. Thank you, sir. So Section B2. It is the goals and objectives, and I was, we have a lot of unknowns in our programs right now. So I wasn't terribly lofty in our goals, but so if there are any goals that you want to discuss or maybe consider, then I'll be happy to look into those later on today or first thing in the morning.
Do you want to talk about unknowns, or are they unknown?
They're unknown. They're truly unknown. So we're hearing crickets right now. So Goal one is to manage HACs programs in an efficient and fiscally sustainable manner that will comply with applicable statutes. We intend to do that by remaining a high performer with the Section 8 Management Assessment Program. That's essentially how HUD rates us. And we're rated on different categories such as lease-ups and how we pull from the waiting list. Do we do rent reasonableness when people lease up in our jurisdictions? Do we, are our payment standards consistent with the rents that HUD publishes every year? Those are the types of things that we're graded on. We provide staff with information and training regarding changes throughout the year. We maintain internal policies in accordance with the HUD regulations, and we collaborate and participate in groups to remain updated on the changes and best practices. Goal two is to ensure housing participants are residing in safe, decent, and sanitary conditions. So we have, we conduct annual, biannual, and complaint inspections. We also do inspections before anyone moves out, so that's their, or moves into the property. So they'll submit their request for tenancy approval, and then we do an inspection before they're able to move in. So the annual inspections are, of course, done every year. And the biannual are if the, if it's a multifamily complex that does their own inspections, or if it's a landlord with a single-family dwelling who has a record of maintaining the property up to housing quality standards inspections. So we're going to continue to do that. We are going to transition to Inspire, which is the new HUD inspection system, if HUD follows through with transitioning to that. We don't know if they're going to or not. They might continue to use housing quality standards. Ensure staff receive adequate information and training pertaining to housing inspections. Our Goal three is to affirmatively further fair housing. That's, and we're going to do that by safeguarding access to assisted housing regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability. We currently partner with Southwest for Housing Council to provide housing seminars to landlords and tenants, which we have on schedule for next month. That I'll be getting the information to our Public Information Officer to either today or in the morning, so that we can get that out. And we also continue to provide fair housing training to staff. Goal four is to promote self-sufficiency and asset development. We currently have the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This is the grant that you all just approved at the last board meeting. That promotes the development of strategies through coordination of public and private resources to assist participants in achieving economic self-sufficiency. And Goal five is to expand the supply of assisted housing. So apply for additional vouchers when and if they become available.
Who provides those? HUD?
Yes, yes. All of our funding comes from HUD for all of our programs. The bulk of our programs or the bulk of our vouchers are provided through an annual contributions contract from HUD, which means it's not a grant that we have to apply for on an annual basis or every three years. Housing Opportunity for Persons with Aid is another one of our housing programs, and we have to reapply for that renewal every three years. And then the Family Self-Sufficiency Grant, we have to apply for the renewal on an annual basis. But those are the only two grants that we have that we have to apply for. The others are an allocation. And the allocation is based on our performance combined with the census.
So there's no state agency involved in between the county and the federal government?
No, sir. It all comes directly from HUD.
I see.
We do collaborate with the Arizona Department of Housing, but we don't, as a matter of fact, we belong to, it was formerly, it's the LCEH right now, but it used to be called the Continuum of Care. And we're in the balance of state. I believe that one of you folks might sit on Continuum of Care, but I think it used to be Peggy Judd that was on the Continuum of Care, so it might be you.
It's on my desk. I got the chart with all the assignments on it.
You have a work session for that?
No, no, no. We did one, and we all picked our assignments, and then we got an updated one, I think, from Laura or somebody, and it's sitting on my desk. Thank you. I was trying to, but we have, I don't know what I sit on, and I haven't committed that to memory. There's like 20 of them on there, so.
Yeah, so you'll get to it eventually. Meanwhile, I can update you on anything you need to be updated on. Are there any questions or comments regarding the goals that?
Yeah, I'm not about the goals, but I got the, about the funding again, what Tom brought up, it all comes straight from HUD. Have you seen anything from the feds on the reductions that funding due to DOGE? You didn't see any hits?
Not officially.
Not officially?
No, just rumor mill type of stuff.
Okay. They haven't gotten to HUD yet.
No, that's the unknown.
It's on the list.
That's the unknown.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is low income for us?
It is, oh.
So who defines it? Does Department of Economic Security or does the federal folks determine what low income is?
HUD publishes the income limits every fall.
Is it a generic number? Is it by region? Is it by state?
It's by region.
By region.
So ours is specific to Cochise County. And then it filters down through the Arizona Department of Housing when it comes through with the, not the payment standards, but the income limits. And Supervisor Crosby, I can get you, I'll email you a list of, as a matter of fact, I'll email all of you the list of our income limits and what they are, because it varies on the size of the household. So extremely low income for a one-person household, I believe, is just over $18,000 a year. And it goes up to around $50,000, I believe, for eight-person households.
Do you have a, where most low-income housing is? That'd be like, Douglas, I think, is probably pretty high up there, isn't it? For the use of the funds, you know, or what am I trying to say? The areas that have the highest use of the low-income funds.
So when we pull from our waiting list, we literally pull in sequential order, but the income is part of what establishes that. But HUD does require that a certain percentage of the vouchers that we issue are extremely low income. So that's the only time that we'll jump out of order. So it's based on date and time that the application is submitted, as well as how many preferences one has. And our preferences are like residency, veteran status, fleeing from domestic violence, let's see, handicap, disability, economic self-sufficiency. Those are the types of, so the more preferences that an applicant has, the faster they move up on the waiting list. But if we need to go to extremely low income, and we don't have that issue, we don't need to jump when the, like, our waiting list has only been open or closed for a year. So we're barely pulling from, we still have close to 800 folks on our waiting list that applied from last year. So when we pull, when it's this new, the extremely low incomers still pretty much, you know, fall within that sequential order of what we need to meet per the HUD requirements.
But do you, of the housing vouchers that you hand out, do you have, could you give statistics on which areas of the county have, like, Sierra Vista, you have this many clients?
Yes, I can give you, that, where they reside doesn't affect whether or not they're pulled from the waiting list, but I can certainly give you a report of how many we have in each area.
Also goes to the availability of housing, right? Do they pull from the list or not?
Yes. We, and we can, we still pull. We initially provide a 90-day voucher, so they have 90 days to try to find housing. We are not allowed to help anyone find housing. It's considered staring.
Well, there's, I think there's a lot of low-income apartments in Douglas. If I remember, you know, when I was campaigning, I was surprised how many there were.
Yeah, we don't get a whole lot of people coming to us telling us that they have problems finding affordable housing. In Disney, it's kind of challenging because of, you know, it's a tourist community, and we have a limited number of landlords. But at the end of our Fair Housing Seminar next month, we're also going to have a landlord briefing to hopefully reach out and get some new landlords, because there are some benefits to being a landlord on this program as well.
You mentioned the term preferences.
Yes.
So you have a scale, and you say, okay, this guy gets five preferences, or this person gets 10 preferences, stuff like that. Can you explain what you do with this term preferences?
So when the applicant submits their pre-application while the waiting list is open, we have a description of what each preference is on the waiting, or on the application. And they check what applies to them. So if any member in the household has a disability, then they qualify for that preference. Residency just means that they're resident of Cochise or Graham County at the time of their application, at the date of their application. Domestic violence needs to be either a referral, or we also have chronically homeless. So domestic violence, chronically homeless needs to have supporting documentation from someone from a homeless provider or a domestic provider, or some sort of documentation indicating that that preference is relevant. Otherwise, we don't double-check the preferences or verify the preferences, I should say. So the income preference, or not, income's not a preference, but we don't verify income or the preferences until they're pulled from the waiting list.
I see. So that would, that could have a lot to do with why someone gets turned down for assistance is they didn't rate a certain way on this list of preferences compared to other applicants.
That's why we close our waiting list. That's the exact reason why we close our waiting list until we're ready, until it's almost exhausted, and then we're ready to reopen another one. Because say someone only has the residency preference, they're never going to see the top of the list if we continue to take applications with people who have two or three preferences.
So when you say you close that list, tell me what you mean by that.
So.
You've got a list of, what, 25 people, and then you say, okay, now we're going to work off of this list of 25 till what, everybody gets something, or?
But yes, yes, until we can continue to pull, until that list is completely exhausted. And when we're down to about 100 people, a few years ago when we opened it, I wouldn't say it was about 1,200 applicants that we received. This last year when we opened it, we received about 900. And to date, we have just under 800 on our waiting. So as we pull, we'll leave, we keep the waiting list posted with the tenant ID number so that there's no identifying information, and people can check their status regularly. Once that is almost exhausted, then we'll start entertaining, you know, when are we going to open the waiting list? And then when it's completely exhausted, we will start pulling from the new waiting list.
So right now, you have about 800 people on the waiting list?
Yes, just under. Yes.
So quite a challenge.
Yeah, there are a few. Any other questions? I just want to jot this down real quick, so I won't forget that report. Thank you.
You mentioned another term, although all of the rent reasonableness.
Yes.
So how does that apply to you?
So with rent reasonableness, if, once a request for tenancy approval is submitted, the tenant, the prospective tenant and the prospective landlord will fill it out and sign it and submit it with what the contracted rent is. We make sure that the family not only qualifies based on their income and household composition and bedroom size, but we also are required by HUD to do rent reasonableness with houses or properties that are similar. So on our move-in inspection list, we have, we have things that are above and beyond, you know, are the countertops high-end, or the, you know, are their parking facilities? Is the yard large? Those types of things. And that helps us with the rent reasonableness. That way, we make sure, is it legal to charge more for a government-assisted program than it is to charge for a non-assisted unit? So if somebody in an apartment complex finds out that one of their renters receives federal subsidy, so they jack that rent up by $500, that's illegal. So that's why we do rent reasonableness. And we, so in multifamily units, we'll compare with non-assisted units.
Okay, so that comes into the subject of subsidies. All subsidies are coming from HUD?
Yes.
Okay. So that's very interesting, because my observation is that subsidies increase cost and that you have a way to keep that from happening, or you try to?
We try. During COVID, when the rents just really skyrocketed, we did get a waiver to pay 120% of the fair market rent that HUD publishes. But now we're at 110%. We want to still be competitive with the private market to encourage landlords to participate in our program, so that they don't want to get more money from a non-subsidized.
But you subsidize a means-tested rate, though, right? Certain income levels get more than others, but it's up to 110%, is what you're saying, right?
The fair market rent, we can, so.
Say I make, I make 30 grand a year, and I qualify because I got like four kids, and then Kathleen makes 15 grand a year, and she's by herself, right? Do we pay the same rent? Or do I pay more because I make more? Or is there, is there a means-tested, like higher incomes pay a different percentage? Like, you pay 30% of my rent, but you pay 70% of hers. Is that the system?
So you would qualify for a unit that has more bedrooms, because your family composition is larger than Christine's. Christine would qualify for a one-bedroom or a studio. But, so, I'm sorry, that's Kathleen.
I know who you're thinking about.
But I mean, I mean, there's no means-tested formula in there that if your income's a certain amount, you pay this percentage of the rent, and you guys pay the difference?
Yes, it's all income-based.
Oh, that's my bad, no, yeah, okay, okay.
So we have a formula that we go through, and it's very personalized based on the income. We also have deductions such as medical expenses that we can take out when it comes down to determining what our portion is and what the family's portion is.
So Frank's preferences would be different than Kathleen's preferences, and they would get an assignment of whatever services based on what their preferences are on scoring?
Preferences aren't based on family composition. Preferences are based on just those specific preferences that we have. So the residency, the economic sufficiency, the elderly disability. So those are the things that would determine the preference. It's not the family size.
Okay, so the system of preferences is just one portion of how you're going to assign services?
Correct. Correct. The preferences affect, number one, the preferences affect how quickly one moves up on the waiting list. Because the more preferences, the faster they move up. Number two, we also know if someone has a disability, you know, and we need to verify that, if they make a reasonable accommodation request and they receive social security disability, we don't have to go any further to verify that preference. But if they make that reasonable accommodation request, then we know that all we need is something from a certified provider tying that request to what the reasonable accommodation is. And, but, that's really, I'm trying to think if any of our other preferences carry over once they're pulled from the waiting list, but that's the primary reason we have preferences.
There was, somebody contacted me, and she had an issue with reasonable accommodations. Could you tell me, do you happen to remember what that was about? What was her issue? Or could you tell us more about reasonable accommodations?
So reasonable.
She ended up going to Tucson.
Yes, she had already, and I don't, our participants are covered by the Privacy Act. So I don't want to get into. Yeah. But our participants can, what a participant can do is request something from their landlord or from the housing authority and say that their request is tied to their specific disability.
Okay.
And usually, and I met with the Fair Housing Council, I never did meet with HUD on this particular situation. But what was missing in that request, it wasn't to our office, it was to the landlord. And what was missing in that request was the letter from the certified professional or the doctor tying the request in with the reasonable accommodation. And also, the Southwest for Housing Council also said that it was too short of a time span, because, and you're exactly right, we have what's called portability. So participants are able to move from one jurisdiction to another. And if a participant is issued a voucher in another jurisdiction, then they can't be issued a voucher in our jurisdiction, too. They can't be issued more than one voucher. So that was part of the issue there as well. We couldn't continue to pay for a voucher here when there was already one in another jurisdiction for this particular.
So if somebody has a voucher, then that voucher is saying that they have access or repeated availability of such-and-such of a subsidy?
Correct.
I see.
So they're provided a bedroom size along with, based on their family composition, along with the printout that I'm going to send you folks. I'm writing that down, too, so that it doesn't go wherever my stuff is, out in the ether someplace. But they're also provided that so that they know, like, what their dollar amount looks like for that particular size unit as well.
I think I have my other questions. What about you?
I'm good so far. I'm keeping up.
Okay. All right, then. We will move to the progress report from our last five-year plan. So we met Goal one of maintaining a high-performing status with our Section 8 Management Assessment Program. And this is Section B3 of the report.
Does that sound, I mean, does HUD say any met, or is it just moving your?
Yes, so we submit to HUD, and then HUD determines what our status is.
Okay.
And much of it is determined on the reports that we submit to HUD on a monthly basis. So we submit through multiple different mechanisms to HUD on a monthly basis, and of course, an annual basis.
Is that the highest score, high performing?
Yes, yes. We dropped five points. We've dropped five points the last two years. Pardon me while I digress here for a second, but because we were told that we were a metropolitan PHA, and I argued that fact. So now our director's looking into it and said, you know, you really shouldn't have been a metropolitan PHA, because they thought maybe it was because we're multi-jurisdictional, since we serve both Graham and Cochise. But I said, but our population's like less than 186,000. We're like, how many? So, but we dropped five points because of that. We did expand our HUD BASH program. that. Um we did expand our our HUD VASH program, um that's for our veterans. So uh initially, we had twenty-five vouchers. We now have ninety-eight. And um and when HUD offers those to us, we of course not only have to consider whether we can handle those vouchers by with our staff, but if the VA has the staff to administer those because we work with our local VA office very closely. So we we explored the um whether or not to buy a property and expand into project-based vouchers, and that just wasn't feasible. Um we we weren't in the business of becoming owners of property. So um so we we didn't and and as you notice, it's not on a goal for the for the next five-year plan. Uh can you uh continue to apply for um for continuing programs, which which we do? Um we we have the housing choice voucher, that's the section eight voucher, family self-sufficiency, which is what what you folks just approved at the last meeting, HUD VASH, and HOPLA is housing opportunity for persons with AIDS. We also were awarded some um some new programs for special use and emergency housing vouchers, which are exactly that. They they don't have to get on that list of eight hundred people. It's intended for people who are fleeing a domestic violence situation or chronically homeless and um and our local shelters will do what's called a needs assessment and then they do, they they give us the referrals. We also have um we we entered into an agreement with our local continuum of care for the emergency housing vouchers uh for to to provide housing for move-on strategies for for people who are diagnosed with adult diagnosis of um SMI and um and an addiction. And um and and all they need is a housing component of that. They no longer need the the counseling por- portion of that.
SMI means?
Purely mentally ill.
Okay.
I apologize. You you might have to catch me on that more than once today.
Uh you s- you said holding writing fast enough. Needs assessment by somebody who who does a needs assessment anyway?
Good Neighbor Alliance does does a majority of the needs assessment. HUD VASH also does a needs assessment before they do they uh send us referrals.
Who is HUD VASH?
Um that's our our VA office.
Okay.
Um so so they, when when veterans come into their office and apply, they they do a needs assessment so that um they they make sure that they refer the person with the highest needs to us first. And um and continue to provide a minimum of two fair housing seminars a year. Um we, last year, we uh we needed to cancel for a variety of reasons. So so for the last two or three years, before that, it was becau- due to COVID and and coming down from COVID, they were all electronic. And um and last year, we we offer electronic seminars as well. So I in collaboration with Southwest for Housing Council. So this will be our first in-person seminar in about three years, four years. Uh we have not applied for the lead-based paint hazard control program. As a matter of fact, I I reached out to um Development Services because with this, this grant is such a large grant that we would have to hire additional staff. So um so Dan Coxworth and I chatted about it briefly to see if maybe he had um more of a bandwidth to apply for this grant. So because we, I was going to go in and partner with um Development Services and um and the Health Department. And the three of us were going to collaborate. But uh but there's really no need for the housing authority to um to be in this unless they uh unless they need our software. Um and and then we can um but but we'll um I'll continue to to talk to Development Services to to see if they would like to go after this grant.
Now, is it lead-based?
Yeah, yes. We did increase our housing choice vouchers by two hundred and ten vouchers combined combined with housing choice vouchers, um special purpose and emergency housing vouchers. A big reason um that number is so large is because um Douglas and Cochise County divested. So we we combined. And we now have Douglas's voucher, which were a hundred and ninety-three vouchers. And um and we did not apply for the tenant protection vouchers for fo- foster to youth independent. Um I I did meet with that. That's in collaboration with Department of Child Services and is essentially for children who are aging or or um uh ch- or foster, yes, thank you, who are aging out of the system and it provides them housing. So um so Department of Child Services indicated that that we could use five in our area. A huge reason we didn't apply for these is because of the increase of the two hundred and ten vouchers and just the learning curve and and everything associated with that the last couple of years. So um so I didn't put that on the um on the goals for the next five years because I wanted to see if it's something that you folks might want me to explore and see if it's still feasible in for us to apply for and over the next five years. And and actually yesterday in the continuum of care meeting, um somebody from the Arizona Department of Housing has something, had a program that they're beginning to initiate for um people aging out of foster care as well um that might complement this really well. If if you do decide that that you'd like to to put this on as another goal.
Do you have a recommendation?
I I do. I'd like to to see it. I I know five vouchers really don't seem like a whole lot and we were were really not since HUD has come out with with this um with this program, we've only been contacted by one person who absolutely would have needed it or fit into it. Um but but I think it might be a a nice compliment to our services and fill that gap, even if it is just one person. It it would still have the possibility of filling that gap and that need.
So is that eighteen that they age out? Eighteen?
Yeah, so it would be from eighteen to twenty-five.
And as somebody who just doesn't have anybody left, you might have nowhere else to go.
Exactly. So all of a sudden, on at eighteen, they they're finding themselves on the street.
Yeah. And when you say five vouchers, that's just the minimum that you can apply for or that you just figure that would cover you?
No, HUD requires that we partner with Department of Child Services and that was the feedback that I got from Department of Child Services based on our needs here and what they see in our area.
The tough age too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that would you need us to to what, to say and go for that goal or we have to vote on it or what?
Well, we'll we'll be vote or I won't be voting on it. You'll be voting on it Tuesday.
I do think.
So will that be something you ask us to vote on? Yeah, I'll I'll add that to my report if it's something that that you would like for me to add to the to the goals. It it would be goal six, I believe.
Is it, is it?
Foster youth to in- independence.
Yeah.
Is it uh a burden to you for you guys or it would just be part of the process? I mean, it's not, you know, it overextend you or anything like that to include that goal?
Um, we we only have seven staff in my office and and we don't have a lot of free time. Um but but I I think we could probably pull off five vouchers, five more vouchers.
Yeah, and and you know this, I know that there's actually five people that need him just that was just a recommendation.
Correct. And and that's what if if it's a goal, that's what I would be applying for is five vouchers.
So do you need us to say yes? Do that or?
Careful.
Yeah, we're not voting.
So the direction, I mean, I would think it'd be worthwhile. It's not a burden to you and then something that you think is needed. And I mean, I know somebody who fostered out, I mean, was terrible for them. They had no support on, ended up in drug addiction, in jail. They were lost, so.
Overkill from youth authority in a in a so-called halfway house where somebody was in the juvenile system and they became eighteen, they went to the halfway house. And uh they they, I don't know how it worked out for them because like we're working there when when I went in the border patrol, but I understand the concept. And like you said, they still needs, they need somebody to to.
Yeah, but yeah. So that would be the direction. I would like, unless, you know, you guys have an objection to that direction. I cannot not. I I mean, with my with my nursing.
Yeah.
It was a smile though before, so I guess we're good.
Overfit.
You don't have a good overfit. You don't have a good overfit. So that was my direction. Do I need a second?
So this is a, it's trouble.
Okay, so then I I'll I'll go ahead and add it and and hopefully we'll we'll get them over the next five years. Um so essentially, uh so in section, um well, this isn't a section. So under VAWA, on page four of the five-year plan, the we meet our our Violence Against Women Act, um by the preference that that we provide. We also have um a VAWA policy in our administrative plan. We collaborate with domestic violence shelters and law enforcement agencies. We also hand out um information at our briefings regarding um information on VAWA along uh and we also um enter that sort of information into uh the EIV system, which is the enter- enterprise income verifis- verification system. I don't know why I can't talk today. Um we have programs, policies, procedures, and regulations. Yes, sir.
Oh, wait until the mayor of Little Council. No, yeah, I'm mistaken. Some some friendly person.
He's gonna go home and say, supervisor.
Um and again, as as we're consistent with everything, we we keep staff updated on outside outside resources available to child and or adult victims of domestic violence, dating violence, and or sexual assault or stalking.
How many shelters do you have, Kelly White?
So we only have two emergency shelters. We have Good Neighbor Alliance and the Business Coalition for the Homeless in Tim Town.
The House of Hope.
The House of Hope is domestic violence and Fort Gash House is also domestic violence. So essentially, we altogether, we only have four. It in and uh the the needs assessment from um House of Hope or domestic violence is done through the Good Neighbor Alliance for for people that that they refer to us. So um HUD requires that any um any significant amendment or modification in section C one of the five-year plan, that we have to make a public announcement, which we did. We also had um a resident advisory board that we're required to have, which I'll touch on later. Um but that is defined as, um I I'm sorry, so the the first one that that we made was um was in section two point two of our administrative plan. And um what we're asking now is that the owner must show justification for any rental increase. Only one request per tenant may be submitted within a twelve-month period, and the increase must not exceed ten percent of the contracted rent. What drove us to make that change was that we had a a for-profit company buy up multiple multi-family complexes and jack up their rents really high. When I did my research, I was stunned that HUD didn't have any guidelines on the percentage that they could jack it up. And um and so but I mean, would 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 uh what stops the free market from making that decision? Like, so so I'm a I'm a landlord, you know, and all of a sudden now I find out that the average going rate for apartments or houses in this area is a certain amount, which means the market will allow me to charge this much more rent. I decided to raise the rent to be with that. That that would preclude me from doing that. It it, we can deny it under our program rules.
You you can deny that tenant getting subsidized.
Yes, we we.
Which can't stop me from renting the apartment.
No, no. And and we can't stop you, you, if if you were in a contract, then then um you know, in a in a lease that was date-specific, then.
Contract, so you have to wait till the lease is.
Exactly. And then in the state of Arizona, if you don't sign a new lease, then you go month-to-month under under the new um or under the the same provisions. However, uh excuse me. So there's nothing that would keep you from telling that tenant that that you don't intend to rent to them anymore because we only allowed a certain percentage of a rental increase. But at the same time, we've seen how many of our participants had to move out of these multi-family units. One of them, her rent was increased by over four hundred dollars a month. So um.
Does the landlord get some kind of tax break for doing this?
No.
No, so it's just the kindness of their heart because?
The voucher, the vouchers, the.
They get the.
Subsidy, subsidy, so so that that person can be there.
Okay.
I mean, I I know a few people that do section eight subsidize housing. I mean, it's in their business model because they could guarantee that these.
And they would get that amount.
Yeah, they're filled, right? And the government guarantees the rent gets paid.
The the government only not guarantees or does not only guarantee that the rent gets paid, but there's a three-way contract with the housing assistance payment contract. The tenant has obligations, the housing authority does, and so does the landlord. And part of the tenant obligations is that they pay their portion on time, they pay their utilities, and um and we we hold the the um participant accountable.
And if they don't, you boot them out of the program?
No, we not right away. We try to figure out what.
What's going on?
Yeah.
Like that lady you mentioned that had the medical issues or something?
Yeah, and or advocate in any way that that we can, whether there are service organizations out there that would help them get caught up. Because we, you know, everybody's had that situation where they've fallen behind on on bills before. So.
Especially if it has to do with medical stuff.
Yeah. Um we also um included or we also made another change with admission and um and just that that i- in the enterprise verification system um that that we review the reports for any um matches involving another uh housing authority or multi-family um entity to make sure that um that the tenant um did not commit fraud or does not not the, I could talk, just not today. Oh, yeah. And um and so we we also made um that policy and also that the PHA will contact an owner identified in the report to confirm that the family has moved out of the unit so that they're not double leasing like we talked about earlier, or um or current tenancy status, including um their forms, which is a, they're both HUD forms.
Duplicative services, that's what we call.
Exactly, exactly.
Said duplicative or? A tomato, tomato.
Can you say that?
Duplicative, duplicative. I can't, but I choose that.
Um, any questions on on those changes? Okay. And um and um for this uh resident advisory board comments, um we didn't have anything challenged in our resident board meetings. Uh and I just included some of the comments that were made about our staff and our programs. We had um two people attend. We had, um, two people attend. I had, um, I had multiple meetings. And, um, and, but however, we had two more than we usually have, so I was happy. And, um, and we, and I also try to include people from all of our programs. So they'll give us insight from all of our programs. So by the way, the resident advisory board is just that. They're people who are participating in our programs that can give us input from the program site. Any questions on that? And, um, section D just goes over what we're doing to comply with affirmatively furthering fair housing. And, um, and essentially it says that we're not going to discriminate based on any covered classes. And we also, um, although we do not provide any sort of legal advice to folks. If they are, if, if we're con- if our office is contacted with a possible housing discrimination case. We will help advocate and, and refer those people to the correct authority. Any questions on that?
What do you do to participate in a homeless outreach strategy?
So. So the continuum of care is, is a big one. We have, it is a bunch of service providers sitting at the table to fill in the service gaps. So that's one of them. We also help participate in, um, in counts, homeless counts. And those counts determine how much money comes to our community. This, this year, this last January, um, they, they didn't need us last January, so we didn't participate last January. But, um, the, the number was quite a bit higher.
So you mean County White?
Yes, yes.
How mu- what is that number possibly?
I don't know the exact number overall. I remember, I'm at the, not at this, not at yesterday's meeting, but last month's meeting, they were talking about how much higher.
It's like a hundred higher, there's a hundred, no idea.
I, I want to say it was between fifty and a hundred higher.
And that's County White?
Yes, and, um, and different agencies are recruited to participate in that too. Because so, so that, that the counts aren't duplicated. HUD requires that it's done in a specific, on a specific day and a specific time. And, um, and so hospitals and, and law enforcement, yeah. Um, different agencies all, all chip in to, to help with that. And then of course, we collaborate with, with those agencies. But, but the emergency housing voucher went, vouchers went a, a long way in helping with homelessness too. Because, um, because now that homeless person doesn't need to be on a waiting list of eight hundred people. But, um, but also, um, when we added, we added that, that preference. I want to say chronically homeless preference about six or seven years ago. So that one would move up faster on the waiting list if they are chronically homeless. Any other questions or comments on that? Based our goals for fair housing are to educate landlords, tenants and staff, and this is section B one. Um, about fair housing laws and, and again, that's with Southwest for Housing Council. Um, field fair housing complaints, we advocate and we refer to the appropriate agency. And we ensure our administrative plan has updated fair housing laws and regulations. Oops, that was me. That was me. I, I keep on forgetting there's a microphone.
They're very sensitive mics.
Yes, they are. Any questions about the five-year plan?
Yep, very thorough.
Well, thank you. And so. We, we have a, a phenomenal housing staff.
Many?
We have seven.
All the, the fund that comes from these grants?
Yes, yes. So we.
You don't have to turn in the budget to Sharon then?
Well, nobody gets by me, so. She does because they're the general fund.
So what?
Well, how do you explain it?
Fifty percent of the money is from grants.
No.
There's no match?
No match, no.
Okay, so all the money, the personnel.
No, one hundred percent of personnel.
County, the county as a whole, the whole county.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant my department.
Fifty percent of all the money in the county is from grants, fifty percent of all personnel.
Yeah, so.
But that started early.
Really sharp, poor way.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. So no, just from the general fund's perspective, it's a passive, so. And, and the county actually makes money off of us because we're charged in overhead since we're grant funded. So we, we pay, um, over thirty-eight hundred a month for overhead to the county. So, so that allows us to.
Yeah, but that, that covers their benefits and everything else, right?
Benefits come out of them.
Oh, it comes out of the compensation?
Yeah, we, we, we paid for all of that. We even paid for, um, so I, and I split it up accordingly and over the grants. Um, but, but the, the county pays our payroll. And then they send us an invoice and then I, I just.
So thirty-one hundred cents for rent, right?
I'm sorry?
Like rent.
You could call it that. Yeah, that's the part of the administrative overhead, the staff time involved to this housing from the budget departments. And, but yeah, it's overall a federally funded program. So I often call it quasi-county, you know, it's reliant on federal funds.
There's, there's an attorney. Oh yeah, that's gonna be, uh, for the meeting, meeting at two o'clock. All right, well, Nita, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me just, uh, say the next meeting will be a special and possible executive session meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock in the executive conference room to be briefed by Mr. LaSota on the notice of hearing and the settlement agreeing, agreement regarding Mr. LeChance.
That's tomorrow?
Yeah, that call, we can zoom in.
Maybe, I'm in portal.
Then zoom.
Well, you can activate your hotspot. And show them.
So I'm coming out of a, there's a, a radio station interview at the Bisbee. And then I'm in the, on the road. You want to show me how I'm gonna do that on the road?
You can pull over. If you could do so.
So Lucy's just added, correct?
Uh, earlier in the week, like Monday.
Yeah, we got word from the court about a hearing.
Is that the twenty-fifth?
You probably read it in the papers.
No, they, they, yeah, we did, um, email yesterday.
Right, that was, that's my.
Yeah.
The hearing, but.
Well, that's.
The proposed sound. Please, okay. And, and that's if your hotspot works in Portal too.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably anything that works. Going on that highway, it's like.
So you go, you go all the way around?
I have to go back, yeah, just go through Douglas, then you go like towards Silver Creek and then up to Rodeo, Mexico.
Well, anyways, that's what, that's the next meeting. We'll figure it out. But, uh, if there's nothing else, anybody, anything else before I hit the knuckles on the table? No? All right, we're adjourned.